Okay, I gotta cut the workshop off. We officially seven o'clock. So, welcome everybody to our city council meeting. We just had some great dialogue on our workshop discussion for our city projects and funding and city councils' goals of projects of importance. And so we look forward to continue dialogue on that. Welcome to our September fifteenth, two thousand twenty city council meeting. This meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so that we can have a productive meeting. Consistent with Governor Ann's orders twenty dash twenty-eight, nine days, September the second, two thousand twenty, all public meetings continue to be held remotely. We are following the directions of that order. On this agenda, routine and necessary actions for our council to consider. We will also provide two opportunities for the public to provide comments. Joining me in the council chambers are myself, Mayor of New York, City Administrator Katie Allen, City Clerk Dan Swenson, Police Sergeant Darren Morgan, Finance Director RJ Stevenson, Lisa Key from Director of Planning and Engineering, IT Support Todd Henderson. Also on the call, I see Josh from the Library, Jennifer Camp, Ben Schmidt, who am I missing? Stephen Williams. I think I covered everybody. Todd will be the manager of the Zoom meeting. I will be taking a roll call shortly. As I mentioned earlier, there are two opportunities for public comment. When that time comes, I will acknowledge public participation for up to three minutes. For the record, please let us know your name and if you're our City Liberty League President or not to participate. If you'd like to make a comment, on the lower part of your screen, you'll see a chat button in which you can notify us or talk about whether you would like to make a comment. Finally, anyone who is not speaking, please, you will be muted until that opportunity comes for you to speak. The first agenda item is the invocation. God, our Father, I thank you for all the blessings you provide us every day. I ask that you continue to watch over all of our first responders that help keep us safe from fire to police to EMTs, as well as our military personnel that are doing everything that they can to keep us safe. And I ask that you watch over our city, state, and country as we are all facing some of the biggest challenges we've ever faced. And please give us guidance to make sure we're making the best decisions possible for our community. In Jesus' name, a great amen. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. First, one nation, our God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Do you know how hard that is to do when you hear all the echoing? Okay. So we got the invocation done. Next, we will do roll call. Relaxing. Yeah, sorry, roll call. Mayor Portman Kennedy. Councilmember Foer. Councilmember Dan.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kirk. Councilmember Langford. Councilmember Comiscus. Also want to make sure, on the line, our attorney, Sean Bouts.
I'm present. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Agenda approval. Mayor Portman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the mayor and also the council consideration. We have two items that we need to add to that. When we come under general business, B one would be in reference to the tents. The number goes from seven to nine. And B two would be added. It would be a task order with parametrics. There's a dollar on everything. It can be read into detail later.
Second the agenda.
I heard a second. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, nice to have it. This is the next topic, citizen comments. This is your first opportunity to make any citizen comments. Again, you can click the chat button on the bottom of the screen and let us know if you want to make a citizen comment. You will have another opportunity before our executive session. Any citizen comments? Once, twice? Okay. Moving on to reports, city council board and commission reports. Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Mayor, this is Richard Seiler.
Yes.
Planning Commission.
Yes, thank you, Richard. I was just, I just realized I missed you. My apologies.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure. So, Mayor and city council members, I just want to give a update of where we are. We're really working on comp plan and code amendments, and we're doing it remotely as you guys are doing these meetings too. So, some of the stuff like our landscape one, we kind of put on hold because it was too difficult to do it remotely. So, we've been working on things such as food truck allowances in the various zones that had not been allowed. I think last year, we let some in one zone for the food truck to go. We're expanding that. For your information, we, the Planning Commission, have decided to also put it in the M one, M two, and M three zones. I think that was beyond what initially was presented to us by Lisa Keys, but we had some discussions and decided we would present that to you guys that way also. So eventually, you'll see that coming your way. There are some things that are just editorials and up to date with state standards and requirements, such as the junk car definition. We're working on that. Land division process improvements, it's minor stuff, but it's letting the folks that present or develop land around here make sure all that information gets to the county rather than the city doing that. So it takes the city out of that step of putting all the plans and final filings with the county. It makes the person developing the land or whatever to put that in with the county. And then the other is, we did some lot size, the percentage of structure coverage on lot sizes in in, I think, our one zone. I could be wrong. I don't know. But anyways, yeah, our one zone. We're also updating to do it for the R two zone because it's out of date now that R one has been updated. And then we've done some editorials with the lighting standards. And that's pretty much it for what we've been working on. Again, if you guys have anything you want us to work on, I would be more than interested to take any information you have or through Lisa Keys. That's who normally does our agendas, and we agree with her. You know, she gives us the recommendations. One thing we do have, Mayor, I'm not sure, it sounds like Joshua McKee, one of our planning commission members, is asking to resign. I don't know that he's formally approached you yet. Did he?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So we'll be looking for that, getting on back into looking at selecting another planning commission member.
Yes, sir.
And that's all I have.
Any questions from the council for Richard? Councilmember Dan.
Hey, Richard, I'm grateful for your reporting here tonight, as well as your effort with that group to consider the changes at hand. I just want to underscore the importance of the work of the planning commission and trying to understand and manage the changes at hand and then the information that you give us. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you very much, Richard. Any other comments or questions from the council for Richard? Okay, not hearing any. Thank you very much, Richard. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
All right, mayor and city council reports. Now we're on the right track. Don't try not to skip anything anymore. They get going too fast sometimes. Any council reports? Updates? Councilmember Dan.
Hey, this is Dan. Yeah, I first want to make a shout out for our utility, the Liberty Lake Shore and Water District. My absence at the last council meeting was related to a flood I witnessed in my building. I guess I'd say the support given by the water district, recognizing do's and don'ts. Just a great moment of, you know, public safety announcement for everybody. Be sure you know where the main water on off is for your building. Yeah, that's the reason I couldn't be here. Anyway, yeah, I want to specifically recognize B.J. Adams in reference, then also direct staff member Hayden, to be able to be on the site and to give me some guidance and actions. Then I just, I wanted to recognize in action what had been reported in minutes is the city council's workshop last week and specifically the city property land use discussion. And specifically, it sounds the anonymous sale of a twenty-three-vehicle parcel adjacent to Liberty Lake Road and Leggitt Ridge Drive. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to be able to participate in that discussion. I just want to make sure in reference that council members and also the kind of the car community recognize the asset that that property is and how, in the long term, undeveloped or I'd say natural scape is, in my opinion, definitely the better, I'd say, better use. I'll draw attention to R one in the zoning, which is required on the property. Be very clear. And I would call for, I think, fifty home sites in council, which would be in addition to the Liberty Lake Drive, Liberty Lake Road. Anyway, I'm expressing the disappointment in the sake of the conversation that was had and just want to make sure that each one of the council members in the community recognize the impacts of that sale. Specifically for the city to arrange for a sale on the property without a particular need for the asset cash generated by that sale is a little odd. I would say that the asset held by the city has significantly greater value than what might be cash flow generated in its sale. So I just want to be able to present my observations and what would have been that discussion. Thank you.
Any other council member reports? Mayor Portman Kennedy.
Just a little bit on, it always comes up interesting, you know. Where we live, we tend to get involved where we are and our neighbors, and we don't really get involved in that. I had the opportunity, Betty and I, the day after our last meeting, we went on a trip over to Seattle, up into Port Angeles, travel that one oh one all the way down to Astoria. We were able to do a lot of business with clientele that we have along that way. The thing that was most interesting is it being able to visit these cities and see the impact that they're suffering because of the COVID virus and things being shut down. You know, we are very, very fortunate to be able to be in the financial position that we are in. And one city I would really want to point out is the Port Angeles. We were there on Labor Day weekend, and what was unique for that town, it's a town a little over twenty thousand people, and they have a ferry that goes back and forth to Canada. With Canada being closed down, there is no activity. There's nothing. There's thirty-some-odd businesses just in the water alone, and one of them was open, and only one, in that entire weekend. The only place where you could go to have a lunch or anything like that was Red Lion, and they're at about twenty percent capacity. So it was remarkable to see a city such as that, it relies so heavily on the Canadian traffic and also tourism. You think of the devastation that they will have to deal with, and how do they make up that revenue? So the benefit of making the trip was not only business and pleasure, but it really drives home how fortunate we are. Very good.
Thank you, Mayor Portman Kennedy. I would wholeheartedly agree with you in hearing from other cities across the state. We are very blessed and fortunate for the position we are in, and it has taken the entire community to respond to this. So I'm grateful for everybody. I was able to attend the COVID meeting this morning. Things have not changed from last week or the week prior to that. I will say for the, it's gone up a little bit, not much, but for the per thousand, it was in the nineties, and we're just creeping over a hundred per thousand for the reports that we got this morning. So it's, while it's kind of flatlined, we did see a little bump. It's not hitting that downward trend that we're hopeful for. There was a very excellent, the police department usually has an annual summer get together, and they had that this weekend, very well attended, a great time to honor Chief and Carol one last time. I think we'll always be honoring Chief and Carol. I shouldn't say one last time. But it was a great opportunity for all the officers and their spouses to let Chief and Carol know how much they mean to the entire department. We'll have some updates on the chalk and walk event. I do really want to acknowledge everybody that was involved in that. It took a lot of work and effort on some staff's part as well as citizens' part, and I know that Katie will talk about that further. So that's my report for now. We will be having some discussions with all the mayors coming up here pretty soon, and I look forward to reporting on that. Councilmember Comiscus.
Yeah, just a note that, you know, Eastern Washington University has moved in starting tomorrow or Thursday, and classes start the following week. So it'll be very interesting to see how the Spokane numbers go with regards to COVID once that starts.
Yeah, I think it is important to note that our numbers are not just Spokane County-related, to your point. I know that Eastern Washington is in the region, but there are outside groups that are infected that come into our Spokane hospitals that impacts that number. Councilmember Foer.
Mayor, thank you. Sorry for having one last final inquiry after you say your piece. I apologize.
No worries. Please do. Never apologize for that.
So I just have, I was going to bring something up tonight as a request, but given our discussion from our earlier workshop regarding future discussions around our capital facilities plan, that's probably going to take a priority, but I just wanted to give the other council members a heads up that sometime in the near future, I'm going to be pursuing a further discussion regarding our Resolution twelve regarding our city council rules of procedure. So in your spare time, and I know we all have lots of it, if you would, take a time, take a minute to read that over because I'll be bringing it up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Foer. Okay, anything further from other council members?
Hey, I just, in contribution for what Chris had mentioned on Eastern, that Gonzaga University opened their in-person classes two weeks ago, that approximately a quarter of what they would usually have as the on-campus student housing is occupied. So the population recognizes that if that school is going to stay open or closed, it's actually in the hands of the students. And that was a great moment of empowerment. The students got to make the call. If they're going to have off-campus parties and infect each other, they're going to close the school down. And the same choice, I'm sure, lies in the hands of the students at Eastern.
Councilmember Langford, I saw your hand up.
Yes, Mayor. I would just ask that, if possible, if Councilmember Foer could speak with Chris Comiscus because I know she too was ready to bring up a review of the council's policies and procedures. And maybe we could set this whole thing up for a period of review and workshop.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Comiscus, I will note, I am meeting with a gentleman named Gary tomorrow. He is the new acting president for Eastern Washington University. And so I will try to get some further information from him on what their plan is.
Great, thank you. Then still hit me up with when you want to get together on that resolution, for that ordinance.
Okay, moving on, city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the council, I have a report. And I wanted to start with asking all of you, if you have any questions about the agenda that you're going to be voting on in the next hour or so. I do want to point out some of the amendments that Vice Mayor Kennedy added to the agenda. So B one, or BI, ten BI, is related to us using COVID dollars to buy tents that are fire-rated to support our local restaurants. And I have to tell you, last week when I was talking to them, as they were getting back to me, it was Friday afternoon when I got the last order. Tents, the number went from seven up to nine. So we have four restaurants in our city that have asked for these tents. Two of them have given me a email about the benefit of these tents that they feel, this was before the smoke set in, but that they feel that they can keep their doors open by using these tents in the coming months to stay in business and serve their clientele. So I just want to, very, very well received. I do want to say they're used tents. They came from A to Z Rental, so I really want to thank A to Z Rental for allowing us to purchase these tents with COVID dollars. The tents do remain in the city at the conclusion of our loading them to our businesses. And Jen assured me we have a lot of use for those. We'll put them in good use in the years to come. But that's what that relates to. If you approve it tonight, we were planning to have A to Z Rental and start those canopies or tents. They're twenty by twenty feet. Some of the other restaurants are getting more than one starting tomorrow. However, with the smoke, we may be delaying that installation. So that's a little bit of background about that item. And then the task order with parametrics. In the course of defending our issuance of our mitigated declaration of non-significance for the cat killer project, we need technical support to respond to some of the issues, the technical issues being raised by the valley. And so this is the not-to-exceed task order. I don't know exactly how many hours we will be spending, but we are going to give you an update in executive session on the status of the mayor's and my, and our attorney's discussion yesterday with the valley. So we'll have more information in executive session. However, for purposes of the task order, we would only spend this money if we needed their technical support for the analysis. So that funding would come out of professional services. And then the network analysis, you stated many times before, we just wanted a resolution. It helps us use the network analysis if we have a resolution adopting it formally. And then finally, the emergency purchase of a vehicle. This is a vehicle that was stolen from the public works yard probably about a month ago, and we have not found it. We do need to purchase a new one. This vehicle is essential to our hotel operations. Stephen Williams is on the line. I know if you have any questions, but we want to make sure that you are aware of that, the rate of wise in emergency purchases. We need it. We have found our vehicle, as my understanding is, it's out of state. So we do need to get it up here so we can outfit it for a show. So that's kind of a quick recap of what's on the agenda. If there's not any, if there's questions, let me know. I'll pause for a minute. Okay.
Quick one, Katie.
Yes.
Observations. Dan, this is the vehicle purchase. Did we get an insurance settlement on that stolen vehicle?
We actually did collect, we actually received the check today from Clear Risk. It was for a little over forty-four thousand, and that was just for the vehicle. They have not repossessed for tools and other items that were taken from vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Moving along then. I already touched on the task order with parametrics related to the CBAPO. As Mayor mentioned, on September fifth, we had our first annual chalk and walk. It was very well received. And just special kudos to Anita and Tom Salver, Anita Iler. They were kind of the juices getting us going, and I want to say, for a very first effort, we received so many positive comments. And as I was driving around, I can't remember exactly where, oh, we were taking a new employee for GSI around ten, and I saw chalk on sidewalks throughout our city. So it was really cool, I thought, and we just wanted to give them a public shout out for their support and created juices. There was others on the committee that stepped in, donated money, donated resources, and it was really just a great event. So moving on, we have smoke. I wanted to let you know what we're doing related to city operations because it has impacted us. So obviously, over the weekend, we, you know, just had a lot of employees showing up at work. But then start Monday, we asked all of our crew to stay home unless they could come into an enclosed environment. The library kind of falls in that category because we do checkout, curbside service to get the book. So we've asked all of our employees, if you are outside, to wear masks. We have N ninety-five masks to provide them. We don't want anyone outside for an extended period of time. Tomorrow's Wednesday is getting a little bit better, but it's still not where we want it to be. But there is some mowing that needs to happen, and so Jen, I know you're on the line. Do you want to give the council a quick recap of, we're behind right now, but we're going to be having some crews start up tomorrow, getting caught up?
Yeah, so we're about two days behind on our daily tasks, on our bare, bare essential tasks. We'll have limited crews starting tomorrow and probably through the end of the week with the smoke, but we will make sure that they are only outside as needed. And any tasks that don't need to be done and can be put off, we will put off. We also are offering a handful of indoor tests, organizing, cleaning, equipment detail, that kind of thing, just to keep people busy. Those are things that obviously are important, need to be done. It's a good time to do it. And then anyone who is not well enough or comfortable working in the smoke, we are offering them to stay home. We don't want to push them and, you know, force them to work. We want them to have the choice to put their health first. So, any questions?
Jen, I was going to add, although if they do decide to not work during the outdoor hazardous situation, we are allowing them during the pay period to make up their hours when the smoke is gone.
Right. Yep, they can make up their hours at a later, a later time this week or in following weeks.
I think Councilmember Comiscus did hand up.
Yeah, hi. I just want to mention, so Mark Sabah and I were actually at the city booth on Saturday. He was trying to raise money for Winter Glow, and we closed up early because the smoke got so bad so fast. And so I would just like to suggest that depending on what the numbers are looking like for Saturday, that we may not, we may not be setting up on Saturday because I know I started feeling it in my chest. I think Mark probably did too, and we had our masks on. So just, we'll stay in touch, and we'll watch the numbers and see what it looks like.
And I can also throw a couple of N ninety-five masks in the market bin if you would like. The N ninety-five masks are what Ellen I recommends for smoke, just.
That'd be great just to have them, Jen. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, RJ is going to give us an update on finance budget and CARES Act dollars.
All right. So CARES Fund funding update. If you, ADFBC had shared an extension at the timeline. It has been extended to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty. So originally, that was October thirty-first. The Department of Commerce was requiring. That has been extended to spend CARES Act dollars until November thirtieth at this point. The governor also announced a release of about a hundred twenty-six million dollars to the CARES system for cities. Our allocation of that means that's additional hundred sixty-five thousand dollars on top of the three thirty that we already had been allocated. So our total is just shy of a half a million dollars for CARES Act funding. So part of the action tonight, if you agree on the tent acquisition, that would be a CARES Act dollar that we would spend. And as we go out forward, we're still watching what other cities, how they're reacting and how they're spending the dollars moving forward. I did send out to you yesterday the August dashboard. Wanted to point out, on the top of the dashboard, I moved that purple arrow, which had been stuck and under some concern for a couple of months until we had some data to back it up. And I moved it all the way up to greatly exceed expectations because of marking where we're at today and what the data is showing. Our sales tax numbers have far exceeded expectations, in fact, are outpacing what we were at this time last year. We see construction, sales from online, Home Depot, the do-it-yourself place. They're all having strong, strong sales for over this period of time that they're measuring. We do know that some businesses are struggling out there, but they're not, but there's still a lot of sales activity happening out in our community. I did leave the box though, so it's kind of two-pronged. Where we're at today shows that everything's strong and coming up with expectations, but there is a pink. We don't fully understand or know what the COVID effects is going to be on our future revenue sources. So we want to be very cautious as we move forward, optimistic but cautious. Some of the examples is what I hear from other cities, they're budgeting anywhere from fifteen, twenty percent reduction in sales tax for next year. I do know the state, I believe, is preparing for around eight to ten percent reduction in sales tax. We just, we're in a different, we have a different mix than a lot of other cities do, and so we're very fortunate. and so we're very fortunate. And we're not the only city out there. Other cities are, like us, are, have had stronger than normal sales. But there are definitely cities out there that have seen the exact opposite. So with that, one of the other key indicators that we're seeing strong collection this year is also on the real estate excise tax. There are a lot of house residential markets overturning. And so we've collected almost a matter of budget expectations for recent, we budget considerably. So we're looking right now to update our actual collections for 2019. I did find out this week too, our, so referring back to last year, so our 2019 audit is scheduled to start October 5th. Our state auditors are going to do this virtually. We haven't discussed what the entrance interview is going to look like. And the entrance interview would be an invite that our council would receive to find out what the focus is on for the audit. But I don't, I'm going to guess that's going to be a virtual meeting. We'll obviously show more details as I learn them. That probably has to be true with the exit interview. But that will start up on August 5th. So as we're dealing with 2019, at the beginning of August, we're also preparing for 2021. So forgive me if I ever get my years confused going up in the next couple of months. With 2021, we talked about the capital facility plan that's worked. As councils, you review what's on that list and prepare for October 6th. That will help us gauge for what the 2021 budget will look like. And we can demonstrate where the funding sources will be coming from on some of those first one items, or if there's a project you want to bring forward. Not funded for 2021, but an outline here. I want to touch on the property tax. Last week, there was an article in the Spokesman Review that highlighted that people's property taxes are going up. And it is primarily tied to the school letter rate. Going to be hard to predict exactly what that number's going to be because there's other factors in that to what determines your property tax rate. But the school letter rate temporarily does tie itself to assessed valuation. So by the statement that the school's rate will see increases true, I do think with the, and we haven't seen the final numbers yet, with the increase of assessed valuation in the city itself, the city property taxes that someone would pay if a resident did drill down and by October 20th, my budget will be able to demonstrate that, it actually more than likely see a decrease in their city portion of their property taxes because the AV has grown so large and big for this year. Something also to let you know that there will be information coming from, if you ever heard of this year, is there's this thing called the implicit price deflator. And it's a measurement of personal consumption for expenditures. Currently, that deflator percentage is six tenths of a percent. And why that's important is that in November, we bring forward the 1% property tax resolution. And right now, that maximum, unless you make a special resolution preparation, that max can only be what that IPD is at. And right now, it's hovering about .6. So I'll know more next month where that finally resides. But that took a, that took a large, I would call it nosedive because back in July, we weren't, and if you look at the budget suggestions from MRSC, it suggested that it was well above 1%. We weren't even worried about it. But it dropped down in August well below 1%. So it was something that we have to recognize and talk about and just forewarning if you hear the abbreviation IPD, you'll get more information once to come. Couple other budget items, so to let you know they've seen 2021. We're waiting for what the, for CPI with the minimum wage increase. So if you remember, minimum wage over the last few years have grown incrementally over the last, I think, five years and settled at 1350 this year. And for the next few years, the wage increase is tied to CPI. So sometime by the end of this month, we're waiting for LNI to make that determination what that rate is going to be. We just, for right now, just for forecasting purposes, we're using 2%, but it might fall about 1.5. And then the other thing is that we've grown as a city. We've been under 50 employees from a full-time equivalent standpoint. We, we, we're not there anymore based on our employee activity and where we're at. And because of the Affordable Care Act, we're looking to, you know, extend benefits to our 30-hour or more employees. There's about seven that we've identified that there's a fact that we can extend benefits to. We think the proportional hits will somewhere be in the 70, 75,000. The base impact is going to be to libraries because they do run a few, five employees that are part-time. But we'll have more details on that to follow as well. But that is something we're changing. We're no longer that small, under 50 employees. We've grown substantially since that came into place. So that's all I have.
Councilmember Langford?
Yes, thank you. RJ, number one, you and the other directors have done a great job with the budget. I looked it over carefully, and everything's within specifications. It looks good. There's no overspending going on. A couple of the actual line items may have exploded some, but they're still within their subcategory. That's, all those are running great. So thanks for all the work you did on that. I just wanted to take a moment, since we're talking about property tax increase by the county. It's just so ironic to me that they would pick a time like this when the federal government and the state government is doing all they can to help the unemployed. They have CARES funds going out across the state to help businesses, and our county assessor picks this time to increase property taxes. I think that is shameful. And if there's any interest whatsoever, I would urge the counter, the council to join a joint letter to the assessor saying, you know, basically, this is just not right. Thank you.
I support that idea, Odin.
Councilmember Dunn?
Hey, I would just reflect that the assessor's role is to use the assessed values of property and, you know, providing taxes, and that the housing market right now is on fire. In case you guys have known any peers or colleagues that are actually trying to find a home, the city, the region, our region of Spokane right now is witnessing an increase in relevant property values. Kind of makes me feel like it's Seattle. So I had a question, RJ, related to the dashboard. And the highlighted gesture, that 831, 4.9 million as a cash in the general fund. Curious on a year-over-year basis, I mean, you know, what was it in 831 in 2019 roughly?
I have no idea. I used to have numbers.
No problem.
Give me like 20 seconds, I'll let you know.
No doubt. That's what I totally could picture you doing, man. That's incredible. All right. It's not a critical gesture, but what I wanted to observe is just the relevant cash position that the city's holding with, you know, compared in the trending action. It's not a critical metric, but reflects to some degree our ability to generate revenue and to control expense. So, yeah, cool.
It was 3.8 million. One thing to keep in mind is during that time, we were cash flowing Orchard Park. So if you took that in account, we're probably closer to 4.2, 4.3 at that point last year.
Yep. Thanks. If I could shift one additional question, this one to Katie, actually, it relates to party administrator. You know the chalk walk thing, right? I did actually get a glimpse of some of the photos that were collected by the youth commission. They were out there running around, being part of it. I certainly hope, Katie, we can get those posted to our city's website. And I'm going to stay with great earnest, it is significantly more valuable if it's posted to our city's website than to a Facebook page. So we'd be very grateful for efforts to get that together.
Okay, we will follow up.
Any other comments or questions for RJ?
Okay, so moving along, we do have four recruitments underway right now, as we wanted the council to be aware. We do have a vacant maintenance worker position that's currently being interviewed. Police officer interviews, I believe, are this week or next. A number of applicants have, we have received a number of applicants for an open position. Finally, the police chief position is being advertised and closes the end of September. And then we have a part-time building inspector, this is still in the vacancy that we currently have, and that recruitment is just starting. So on that note, I'm going to move down to Harvard Road and Henry Road. And I feel like I give you updates all the time on this. If you're bored, I apologize. But a couple of new information, Harvard Road, last we heard, they're going to get started the first week of October. We don't have the date specific, but they're looking at the first week of October. And then Henry Road, I had mentioned that we were challenged with budget. And since that last update, some things have happened. One is on the design of the structure, we were able to find some savings, so that was good news. And there was also good news when Mayor Brickner and I met with Councilmember French to identify.
Commissioner.
Excuse me, Commissioner French. And see if the county was interested in allowing us to ditch, ditch terms some of our store markers in the county's driveway just on the south side of I-90. And they were. And that saved a couple hundred thousand dollars to the project. So things are moving along well. Funding is always going to be a concern until the end of the effort, but we continue to make good progress. We're at that 60% time, excuse me, the 60% design. And we would love to show you some renderings and other things when we get a little bit further. But look, I just want to share that all the council projects moving along very well have been doing a very good job managing all the miscellaneous things that come up related to building a structure over a federal facility. It's not easy. So, nothing other questions, I'm going to move on to COVID-19. Okay.
Mayor Brown, Tim Kennedy?
Yeah, Katie, please, don't ever apologize for giving us too much information on Harvard and Henry. We're moving in the right direction. It's exciting to hear what's going on. We've worked on this for a long period of time, so every time it comes up, we're all excited. Thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, so what do you see the construction and the congestion comes from construction, but that's okay. Because there's always demand when it's over and you open up your, you cut the ribbon and your community loves you again. So on that note, COVID-19, just a quick update on miscellaneous things. We've already talked about the canopies for outside dining. If you hear of a restaurant or an eatery place, they have to have enough space for these canopies. But if you hear of anybody that wants a canopy that has a business in the LibriLink, let us know. Masks for LibriLink residents, Tate Hunter helped us distribute those last Friday. Again, a great turnout. I have to say, our older residents show up here almost religiously to pick up their box of masks when we do the distribution. So that's been well received. We'll do another one probably in about three weeks. And I know our community really appreciates that. Public meeting update, this isn't anything new, but October 1st, the closing public meetings is through October 1st. Our next council meeting is October 6th. So we don't know what's going to happen then. Based on the numbers that Mayor Brickner and I saw today, it's hard to think that we're going to be allocated to by then, but we should be optimistic.
Fingers crossed, yeah.
And then finally, the Spokane County average case count was holding for a while. It ticked up a little bit, and that's where we are with the COVID updates that we get weekly on Tuesday mornings. So I'm going to move down to the events, reservations and programs. Farmers Market, I believe it runs through the middle of October. So we're kind of in the last month of Farmers Market on Saturday. SkyHops and Challenger Sport Camps are still underway, and they're still operating in some of our parks, I believe, civilian parks primarily. Winter Glow came up. I understand that there are some volunteers that are trying to raise money to support that activity. As far as I know, social distancing is something they can incorporate into the event. And so a lot of planning is going into Winter Glow. And then finally, the libraries, take and go, grab and go. I wasn't sure if I had the terminology right, but you can, if you're a browser of books, you can actually put in a browsing order. The librarians will browse for you, give you a bag, and you can come and pick up a bag of books and read until your heart's content. And so a lot of our residents, I think, are appreciating some of the creativity that our Johnson, our librarian, our library director and her staff have put together. They've also put together some craft programs and other things, very, very creative over there. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
I think I saw Councilmember Forrester's hand maybe go up. Did you have any questions, or anybody else for that matter?
Oh, I did, but I can save it for the action item, for the agenda item. It was just regarding, it was just regarding the tents for the COVID. Fire away now?
Yeah, go for it.
Sure. My other question is, is the, the cost of the tents versus new, did we ever look at that?
You know, we did. I was working with the fire marshal on this, and the buying new, the size wasn't going to be a problem, and then the delivery delay. And we were concerned that by the time we placed our order and they got here, we would have lost a bid for a week. So it was more timing than anything. The other thing is that we know these tents. We've used them, we've rented them before to host some of our events. So we know what tents we're getting and the quality of the canvas. I'll be very honest with you, when we ordered things online, like some of the tables and chairs, not only the delay in the delivery, but we weren't sure the quality of the product either. So it kind of all came together, working with the fire marshal to find fire rated tents locally. And the price was not that much, it was very comparable, I'll say, to what we'd be getting for online.
Thank you.
Councilmember Langford?
Yes, sir. Just in that same vein, if RJ would double check with the grant to make sure that it allows purchase of used equipment. And secondly, where does the, I noticed in the contract, all these tents are as-is and therefore is non-refundable, non-returnable. And if there's patches that need to be put on or anything, that's going to be our problem. And just to make sure that that's good with the wording of the grant itself.
RJ?
Yeah, so we looked at the viability of the tents in relation to CARES Act dollars. We're, we're looking at, we did the eligibility test to deem that it met all the requirements. The biggest one is the necessity of it. And these tents will keep businesses opening to help prevent a safe place for people to eat and maintain social distancing, and those meet other requirements of the CARES Act, CARES Act dollars. And that being used is not an issue with respect to the CARES Act.
And then in relation to that, anything that we talk about as far as potential, when we talk to, whether it's citizens or business owners, on what they feel they could utilize to help stay safe and continue to move in the forward direction, we always run it through that process to make sure we're, we're in check with it.
And so, Councilmember Langford, that's a great question about the quality of the used tents. So we are looking at, we are having a person out there to inspect the tents before we sign off and accept it. That's another reason why they're installed, they're going to be installing these so that we know that they're fully functional and in good shape.
Thank you.
Councilmember Forrester?
Yeah, on that note, is there any reason, since it is CARES Act funds, is there any reason to purchase more than the seven for replacement purpose?
I could follow up with A to Z to see how many more they have. If you want to amend the purchase to a different number, the challenge we'll have is we have to be able to defend the purchase, RJ. So help me out if we could purchase more than what is being requested for parts and pieces.
Sure enough, the day after you buy them, somebody else will come forward wanting one.
That's right. And we're already up to nine, right?
We're up to nine now, 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, and 9. If council views that it is a necessity to have them ready to go to meet any of the business's needs, if you want to make it, I don't know how many you can get from A to Z, but you could make that motion to make it.
I started with five, and I called about seven, then I called about nine. I'm calling asking if you have.
The other, the other thing, the reason why we need to bring it to council is because of the cost of it, it exceeded the $5,000, but if you wanted to, just a suggestion, we know of nine that need to be used. If you want to authorize staff to move on future tents, we could do it as they call in, and then we can contact A to Z to see if we can get another tent from them.
Sean, I'm going to ask you a quick question on this. Could they also not modify the approval, say, up to the cost of what it would be for 11?
Um, is that, so right now, the, what's, is the agenda more than seven right now? Or is it seven?
Agenda's nine, I believe.
Is nine? Yeah, I mean, you, you could, you could modify the item if you wanted to add two more relative to the general business item. RJ, do you know what the dollar amount would be for the additional two, so the council would know the total amount?
It's approximately $5,000 ASAP, sales tax, delivery charge, approximately.
By the time we get there, I could work it out. I'm assuming there are ten to ten.
Each one comes out.
My, my point is, my, my point is just is you want to do a, prove it, to say that you would modify the agenda item from seven to nine, and then, as it's written right now, the amount is 29, as the seven, not the nine, the agenda I'm looking at, but from nine, what that dollar amount may be, so that the council can say, up to this amount, or what the amount may be specifically.
So we'll, we'll crack that, have RJ crack that number real quick. By the time we get to that, we can make the motion modification from nine to 11 with the price change. Correct?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, anything further on Katie's report? All right, not hearing any. We will move on. Action items. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Action item consent agenda, motion to approve September 1st, 2020, City Council minutes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Langford. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you. Motion to approve Consent Agenda Two for September 5th, 2020, vouchers in the amount of $820,183.95.
Second. I heard a whole lot of seconds. I think I heard Severs first, trying to pick out the, the voices. Any discussion on the action item? Okay, not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, I think we may be ready to use some new numbers.
I have a council member here, so if they're listening, just a second.
I'm down, just, just.
Are you there?
Yeah, way too fast.
We, we read too fast.
Okay, I have $45,990.81, and that would be for 11.
Forty-five, what is it, forty-five thousand what?
Yep, that's what I got too, Katie.
Yeah, it's 4,001, each tent, so the council knows, is approximately, each tent is $4,181, approximately.
All right, we got two verifications on the numbers. Do we want a third?
No, go ahead.
Okay, RJ's good with that number. All right. So with that modification, Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion on a general business, want approved purchase of 11 tents in the amount of, or tents for the local businesses using CARES Act funds from A to Z Rentals in the amount of $45,990.81.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamiskas. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Kennedy?
Yeah. Katie, if you recall, when you and I visited yesterday, I brought up the idea about additional two, and your concern at the time, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you told me that in checking with A to Z, that they had two additional used tents?
I will confirm tomorrow morning that they have two additional.
Right, because it.
They have other distributors that they could probably access. I will be honest with the council that, then, need the place to store these after we retrieve them, when they're done being used. That's another, something I just want the council to be aware of. We, we're going to have to find a, a structure or some kind of a shed, if you will, out of the public works yard to store these canopies slash tents. But I will, I did not talk to A to Z Rental today, Councilmember Kennedy, so I will follow up and confirm if they have the two. They made it sound as though they had access to other operators, because they're, you know, they're in the record, they're still there, go back to other equipment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kamiskas?
Yeah, just a quick note, Katie, when you mentioned the storage, obviously, we'll need to get some advice from A to Z on the right conditions under which to store these. I don't know if they need to be temperature controlled, or, or they need to be hung, or whatever, but obviously, we need to engage them on that when the time comes.
Good point. Okay, I think we're good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Resolutions?
Thank you. General Business Number Two, task.
Oh, sorry.
No, no. We got, the General Business B two, task order.
Yeah, yep, yep, my, my bad.
No problem. General Business B two, task order, and I will, I read what was given to me, approval of task order, parametrics for, up to, Katie, I believe you said $7,000 was the figure?
That is correct.
$7,000 to provide technical support in order to respond to City of Spokane Valley's SEPA appeal for Liberty Lake.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Langford. Discussion? Councilmember Kurtz?
Would any of the technical consultation costs be reimbursable, depending on the outcome?
I doubt it. We did have a conversation with the Valley yesterday, and they're spending, they had $50,000 to do their engineering work to support their position on the impacts, and so we needed to review those impacts from the perspective of Liberty Lake, and we need to have an independent assessment that can testify before the hearing examiner. I'll be very honest with you, Councilmember Kurtz, I do not believe this will be reimbursable.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kamiskas?
Quick question, and this may be more of a question for Sean. So at this point, obviously, we're, you know, none of us are reaching out to Spokane Valley people, but since, is this, and I'm assuming since we're talking about it in this meeting, that their challenge to that determination is public?
Their SEPA, SEPA appeal is yes. That's a public process that will go before the hearing examiner.
Okay, so if somebody would ask, somebody else, obviously, like you said, not Spokane City Council or anybody, but if, say, a resident would approach any of us to ask about it, what are we, and are we not allowed to say? I'm assuming it's nothing, since it's going through a public hearing?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say the best thing to do is redirect everything back through the mayor, or Katie, or myself.
Great. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Okay, not hearing anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, ayes have it. Now we're at resolutions.
Resolution number 20 dash 280, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake adopting the Liberty Lake Network Analysis Update.
Councilmember Langford?
I did not, I could not hear her at all.
Oh, oh, she didn't have them. Yeah.
Want me to reread it?
Yeah, if you want to.
Not better? Resolution number 20 dash 280, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. A resolution of the City of Liberty Lake adopting the Liberty Lake Network Analysis Update.
Very good, thank you. Make a motion to adopt the Liberty Lake Network Analysis Update.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamiskas. Comments? Councilmember Dunn?
Hey, I just want to put a nod to a question that, an observation that Phil Follier had in the presentation of the network analysis, which is a resolute and definitive definition of the movement of cars, but that it, there wasn't a page or two, I think, within this talking about pedestrians. And so, it's with great joy that I look forward to our master industrialistrian planning, set for the capital facilities plan, that we're going to be working on in the next year. So, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Fourier?
Yeah, just clarification, mainly more than anything. I've been in, I think, all of the presentations and the discussions revolving this, regarding this, is, is it fair to assume that the council still has the authority to choose what it would prefer to do, or are we bound by this document?
So, the council, sorry. If I may, the, so the council, you have the ability to adopt a document, you have the ability to make changes at any point in the future as a body, and so, you're not necessarily bound by the recommendations in the document. But, again, one of the things that, that, why it's important that the council adopt the findings of this study is the fact that it's used as a basis for some of the things that we are looking at, capital facilities plan. It also potentially serves as a basis for mitigations that we, that, that we are required. And I think that, I, I think that it's, and funding, everybody has funding.
So, but if, if, for instance, Councilmember Fourier, if you wanted to add a project or delete a project, or something like that, certainly you could do that, at any council meeting. It's just, it'd be, the, the challenging part is the technical aspect that goes into the analysis, and we would just want to make sure that the analysis is consistent with engineering principles and practices.
But at any point, at any point that you, you wanted to revise a project that was identified in this or whatnot, simply direct us to enter into a task order to evaluate that and provide the engineering documentation. That's, it's, it's not that you're binding yourselves or any future council members to any decisions that you're making, just adopting the study.
Okay, I'll be a little more specific. I don't necessarily agree with the lettering of short-term, long-term, you know, B, C, D, F, in, it just seems to me the council should have, be able to have a discussion on whether a long-term intersection solution with the end result of build-out of a lettered score of D, we should be able to have a discussion of whether that's acceptable or not. So if I agree to this, will we be able to have that discussion?
You absolutely will. That's actually established in your comprehensive, the services are part of your comprehensive plan, the transportation improvement plan. So that would be, that would be the venue that you would have a conversation about those capable level of service.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Very good, Mr. Mayor. Number two, oh, I'm sorry.
Actually. Yeah.
City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Spokane County, Washington, Resolution Number 20 dash 281. A resolution declaring an emergency related to purchasing a replacement vehicle and waiving the public bidding requirement pursuant to RCW 39.04.280.
So exciting to spend money. It's easy to jump into this early. Make a motion to approve resolution declaring an emergency purchase for city vehicle.
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. Discussion?
Severs.
Sever?
Accepted by Severs. Or did we do it at the same time? Sorry.
Yeah, I think it was a mutual, you guys nailed it. I, I watched the video clip. It was a tie. Okay. Not hearing any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, upcoming agenda items.
Okay, next, council meeting on October 6th, we have proclamation of Fire Prevention Week. That's even timely. And then also, we plan to award the bid for the traffic signal installation at Ridge Lane High School. Then we also have Plank A, six-month extension of their rental agreement. Is that correct, RJ?
Yeah.
Okay. Internet and phones, those, the RFP or RFQ is being evaluated right now. We may be ready to have that on the agenda to bring back a contract for the purchase of those services. I think to put the damper on anyone summer, but we'd also like to buy some TIs for the winter. And then finally, hopefully, we'll have something with the county related to the stormwater in the right of way, in their right of way for Henry Road, but if we don't, it would be in a subsequent meeting. And then finally, we also have a task order for Parametric to design the legacy, the traffic signal at Legacy Drive.
So we have one more opportunity for citizen comments. As a reminder, if you hit the chat button, yeah. Mayor Proton Candy?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items to add to our request to add to our next council meeting. I mean, requested that we add, for, for a discussion of the generator, discuss, uh, moving forward on the generator, have that on the next council meeting. Also, based on our last meeting, where the council had a workshop discussion, the council was able to bring up two items off the list of 20-some-odd items, and we had a discussion on those two items, and we actually made decisions to move, at least get the ball moving forward on those. I feel that was so successful, that I'd like to propose that we discuss in our next meeting to add that permanently to our list, because under Resolution 12, it allows that in the general meeting to have workshop discussions. Those are two items I'd like to have added.
Yeah. Councilmember, or, right there, Katie, I'm sorry, did you, just need some more clarity on that last part of your request? So coming out of the workshop, yeah, give me some more background on what you're looking for there.
Yeah, based on Resolution Number 12, you can look at page, page workshop discussions, it allows that verbiage to be added to our agenda. We added it to our last agenda, we were able to put things on there and have discussions specifically about things the council wanted to ask, make decisions, how we're going to be able to move forward. I feel it was so successful that we made these decisions, that I think it benefits us to put that on permanently. I think, I think it'd be a good time, Councilman Follier, and also Councilman Kamiskas brought up the point, might be a good time to discuss any changes that we might want to look at on Resolution Number 12.
Do you want that in the workshop, the 6:00 p.m. workshop?
No.
Or do you want it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the second opportunity for citizens to make comments. As a reminder, you can hit the chat feature and let us know if you'd like to make any comments. Not seeing any. We will be going into executive session here in a minute, a few minutes. I do want to remind the council, to RJ's point earlier, we will be discussing our budget and getting it approved, so we'll want to get your. budget and getting it approved, so we want to get your feedback and input as swiftly as possible on 2021 projects that have been identified, so we can get that all in place to present the citizens for our budget. So we will be going into executive session regarding potential delegation as well as real estate, with, I believe, no action being taken afterwards.
Correct. Any actions that are decided, the executive session will come forward on October 6th.
Okay. So we will go into executive session at 8:15, for roughly.
It's going to be, I would guess, 30 minutes.
We'll mark it for 30 minutes to be safe. All right, I'll see you guys in about 10 minutes. For all the citizens that joined us tonight, thank you very much, and have a great night.